Live from Lacey Township, Mayor.
Evening, everyone. Township of Lacey Caucus Meeting, April eighth, six thirty P M. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act Pursuant to Public Laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in Asbury Park Press and The Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We'll rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Amendment of business, special use permit, Chapter two, third, two, eight, May twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
They're at five oh nine North Main Street, right by the urgent care facility. They are a little charitable gift boutique. They are looking to have a vendor there in their parking lot like they did last year, May twenty-ninth, with a rain date of May thirtieth.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have for caucus, unless anybody has anything to add on.
At some point, we're gonna have to address marijuana ordinance. Talk about that at some point, maybe next meeting. And whatever Brad has to say tonight during the township committee meeting, but at some point, we're gonna agree to agree or agree to disagree in some type of form. So, with that, will motion to close caucus?
Move it, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Township of Lacey Township Committee Meeting. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act Pursuant to Public Laws seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and The Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We'll salute the flag and our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Item number one, first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash zero eight, authorizing the sale of block one oh one point oh eight, block eighteen point oh one, to the adjoining property owner.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the sale of block one oh one point zero eight, lot eighteen point oh one, on the municipal tax map to Jose M. and Maria F. Santos. In accordance with the provisions of NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash thirteen B. and NJSA forty-eight colon twelve dash thirteen two. This is a non-conforming twenty by twenty old, what we would call fire easement, being sold to the adjoining property owner for the fair market value of sixty-four hundred dollars plus fees. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes.
Item number two, first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash oh nine, establishing a cap bank.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon four dash forty-five point fourteen. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number three, resolution twenty twenty-one dash one oh one oh nine, certifying the governing body complies with the hiring practices and equal opportunity employment commission.
Resolution of Township of Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, certifying governing body compliance with the United States Equal Opportunity Commission's enforcement guidance on the consideration of arresting conviction records and employment decisions under Title seven of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. This is a companion resolution that must be adopted before we do an introduction of the municipal budget. And it was set, uh, put forth in twenty seventeen that this was part of our budget process.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number four, resolution twenty twenty-one dash one ten, introducing the twenty twenty-one municipal budget.
Resolution of Township of Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, introducing the local municipal budget of the Township of Lacey for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. General appropriations is thirty-three million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Reserve for uncollected taxes is one million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Total general appropriations, thirty-four million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars, less the anticipated revenues of seventeen million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and three dollars. Amount to be raised or supported the municipal budget is seventeen million, five hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This, um, second reading or final adoption of the budget will be May thirteenth, right here in this room at six thirty P M. Um, with regards to the budget, we are introducing on time and introducing within the allowable caps. Um, as, as stated, the total appropriations is thirty-four million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Notable increases in the budget unfortunately is solid waste collection, uh, pension obligations, and we're doing a pay down on our debt services this year. So those are the notable changes in the budget this year. And this is the fifth year in a row that we're not deferring any school taxes.
Move it, second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number five, resolution twenty twenty-one, uh, dash one eleven, awarding contract to Motorola Solutions for emergency radio communications.
Resolution of Township of Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Motorola Solutions Incorporated in care of wireless communications and electronics. This is to bring the police department up to the seven hundred megahertz, uh, system, in addition to finishing, uh, the Bamber Fire Company, the, uh, dive team, and the pagers for all the emergency service squads. This is a contract in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number six, resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twelve, authorizing grant agreement for the municipal alliance program.
Resolution of Township of Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing execution of a grant agreement with the county motion for the municipal alliance program. Funding is as follows, uh, for July first through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, twelve thousand, one fifty-three comes out of the Deter Fund, the cash matches three thousand, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, and the in-kind matches nine thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number seven, re- resolution twenty twenty-one dash one thirteen, authorizing release of a performance bond for block sixteen thirty-four, lot six point oh eight, eight point zero four, ten, and eleven.
Resolution of Township of Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing release of site improvement performance guarantee for block sixteen thirty-four, lot six point oh eight, point eight, point oh four, ten, and eleven, conditioned upon the posting of a maintenance guarantee. These are for the properties along Lake Barnaby Drive, north, and Haynes Street. Um, if, if the property was sold and the current developer has finished all the, um, improvements and will be going on to maintenance bond.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number eight, resolution twenty twenty-one dash one fourteen, authorizing refund of deposit points.
Resolution of Township of Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing refund of deposits out for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item number nine, resolution twenty twenty-one dash one fifteen, authorizing payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township of Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of five million, five hundred and fifty, five million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall.
Yes. Item ten, motion approved township meeting minutes is March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Move it. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Item number eleven, motion approved caucus meeting minutes is March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Move it. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Item number twelve, motion approved gravel license for the Rillery Club of Forked River.
Move it. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor Giuliano?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, couple things, uh, one, I know there was a lot of questions about the water tower back here in the M U A. Uh, with the bad weather all winter long, it's a little bit behind schedule, but, um, it should be painted and done by May first. So there was a lot of questions being asked, even at our M U A meeting, but it's getting done, and the bad weather put us behind schedule a little bit. Um, I, I wanna commend the M U A. They, they did a great job of, if anybody's seen going down to the parapet where they're doing a lot of the work with the piping, well, the M U A is hooking up, uh, we ran a twelve inch, uh, main extension to go right on down to, uh, possibly tie in water to Waretown. Uh, because Waretown is in dire need of water, and, and the water we have here would be sufficient to supply it to them. So, what, reason why I'm bringing that up, uh, and I commend everybody on that M U A, the commissioners, uh, the chairman, uh, the executive director, they did such a good job. They did that in-house, and they saved, uh, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, uh, by doing it in-house. So I, I wanna commend them, it's a great job by everybody at the M U A. Um, please slow down near the construction up here, I've been seeing people have been going kinda, I know it's, it's a pain up here on Route nine, but I've seen some people flying by, you know, there's workers out there, there's, our police officers are out there, so please, uh, you know, respect them, they're trying to do the job as fast as they can, so. Uh, thank you for shopping and dining in our Lacey Township here, uh, please keep on, you know, shopping the stores, eating at the restaurants here in town. Um, I see some of the restaurants are getting more crowded, the stores are at least trying to, you know, do what they can to stay afloat. Um, other than that, um, I would like to thank all the volunteers in Lacey Township, I see the municipal alliances here, uh, thank you very much for everything you do. Um, the D P W workers, uh, the fire, the E M S, everybody that makes Lacey township, and are definitely, uh, our police department, as we noticed, we have the, the chief back there. I wanna thank you very much, chief, for keeping us safe in Lacey Township. Um, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Giuliano. Committeeman Dyckoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I only want to talk about one thing, and I, um, recently lost a very dear friend of mine. And, uh, he was, uh, he was actually a volunteer in this town, and he worked, um, for this town to make it better. Uh, he was actually the, um, commissioner on the M U A. Paul's, Paul Donacola, it's Giuliano, I'm sorry. Giuliano, I'm sorry. But anyway, um, anyone who met Paul knew, you know, what a great guy he was, and I was talking to his widow tonight, and we were reminiscing, and we've seen a lot of pictures of him on Facebook. And one thing you always saw was him enjoying life, didn't matter if it was summer, winter, fall, or spring, whether it was jet skiing, snowmobiling, riding his motorcycle, being with friends, um, he's always there to lend a hand, he volunteered for this township. Um, and he will be sorely missed. Um, anyone who ever met him will, will remember him and, um, will think fond of him very long. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Committeeman Dyckoff, uh, excuse me, Committeeman McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll follow up with Mark, with, with Paul Donacola, just a good guy, he was the guy who put all the food and stuff together for the Republican picnic. Just loved life, lived life to the fullest, and he never lost a day living in Lacey, because we will miss him greatly. Um, the hundred and fiftieth, if you go on the recreation website, we actually have our own hundred and fiftieth website, you can get the, the banners and the shirts and stuff like that, and it's moving forward. Um, uh, with that, with some of the stuff, there'll be more coming out, because as the summertime hits, we'll be doing a lot more, more of what we need to do. The last thing, uh, two weeks ago, I spoke about Dunkin' Donuts and the problem on what we have on Dunkin' Donuts on Lacey Road. And, uh, my communications with the chief today is that starting Monday, everybody is warned, we're gonna start writing tickets. If you're in Lacey Road, you will get a ticket. Okay, we've been issuing warnings, well, enough's enough. Uh, and we know, the chief indicated that it is less because the Dunkin' Donuts over on Lacey Road, uh, on Route nine, has opened up, anticipated that, and then when Starbucks opens up, whenever that is, uh, it'll probably get less. But if you're blocking Lacey Road, trying to get your coffee, you know, keep moving, there's a walk right down the road, or go around the block, or, or do, do something, but don't be sad, you will get a ticket. And, uh, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got my cleanup today, yes, I always got a cleanup.
Can you, can you handle it?
I got a statement tonight. I got it, I got it, Pete. "There will continue to be a lack of faith and trust in our institutions as long as both political parties and the media refuse to concede an inch to the other. Look no further than Georgia as an example. On March twenty-fifth, the Bergen Record proclaimed, 'New Jersey set to expand voting rights laws,' which is technically true. The first sentence read, 'New Jersey is poised to dramatically expand access to the ballot box in upcoming elections and introduce early voting,' which our governor did sign. This article appeared during the new Georgia voting rules uproar. While the press was congratulating Governor Murphy for his signing of the bill, and while he was criticizing Georgia's Jim Crow laws, it turns out that Georgia will have seventeen days of early voting and have Sunday voting, as opposed to New Jersey's ten days. Currently, President Biden's home state of Delaware has no early voting. Additionally, I read a lot of articles that suggested how oppressive it was to ask a person for I D. in order to vote. In New Jersey and other states, you need six points of I D. to even get a driver's license, you need I D. to purchase cigarettes, alcohol, or gamble, I D. to get on a plane, I D. to cash a check at a bank, or take the S A Ts, I D. to rent a car, or rent anything, I could go on. Besides Georgia, thirty-five other states have laws requesting or requiring voters to show I D. I'm not exactly advocating for or against Georgia's new laws, but given the level, level of rhetoric, I hard, I hardly see the problem." That's my statement, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Committeeman Kennis, um, I wanna start also with Paul Donacola, um, I knew Paul, he was, he was a man's man, he was, he was a good guy, if you knew him, uh, you would like him, it was a loss. He spoke his mind, and, uh, I'm gonna miss him personally, because he was, he was good people, and he, his brothers were at the wake the other night, and, uh, on this, and I know, he touched a lot of people in our town. I wanna transition to our budget and thank all my colleagues up here, who, who, the last several months have, uh, gone home, done homework, done research, all of us, our, our chief financial officer, our administrator, everybody up here worked hard, and a lot of people that you don't see. So I wanna thank all colleagues for that, and one, one person, uh, was the heavy weight up here, it's shit, and, and without all of them, and every person up here and behind the scenes doesn't get told. Um, so I think we did the best that we could do in staying within our parameters. I wanna tell people, I called a couple of, uh, people in our community, uh, the other day, Tuesday, found out that Walmart was able to procure five hundred Johnson and Johnson, and I'm done vaccines. We still have openings. Uh, the person that did this is, uh, named Joseph Michael, is a registered pharmacist, he's a major pharmacist in most of New Jersey. Uh, I had met him through my other position in county health, uh, three years ago. And, uh, Walmart's stepping up, they're providing in several towns in our county, and, um, most concerned with ours. So we have five hundred doses, anyone that's over fifty-five, anyone that's a Lacey resident, please call six nine three eleven hundred, and two two zero three is the extension. You do still have openings, and that, that clinic will take place on nineteenth of April at the Lenoka Harbor Fire Department, two Warren Avenue. Um, so it was a, it was a heavy lift, everyone up here had a hand in it, and I appreciate all of my colleagues up here as well, because, uh, they always say there's no lying to you, so that's the way it happens. So, we, we wanna try to, to get rid of this, uh, the macro, the overarching, uh, the county has done just about three hundred thousand vaccinations, up fourteen percent in this past week. So we're getting towards the end of it, and we're hoping that we see the end of it. On the business front, where rubber hits the road, the kitchen table issues, I was on a, uh, conference call at the Southern Ocean County Chamber of Commerce, brought up the fact that we have a successful program, started a couple of years ago in this town, on our website, lacytownship.org, you look to the lower left of the website, you see the state card program. Thirty-two hundred vendors, anything you buy from a participating vendor, including online and brick and order in our town, if they're participating, percentage of that comes right off your property tax. These are purchases you're gonna make anyway, what I requested of the Southern Ocean Chamber was get a consortium with other towns, and it was strengthened numbers. So I want some of the other municipalities, start reaching out to the other municipalities, get a consortium, and then maybe get some additional power, uh, behind the state card program. It's a great program, this town waited to see the pitfalls from some other towns in the county, uh, and we, we chose a good program. Uh, and here are several hundred people, I think it was over a thousand or fifteen hundred that I had now. Uh, that peo, these are people, you know, when taxes go up each year, the obligations, uh, this offsets that worries in a lot of cases, so I encourage people to, uh, be a part of that program. Congressman Kim gave me a call the, the other day, and immediately informed my colleagues, above and beyond the, uh, American Rescue Plan, there could be some additional infrastructure money that will alleviate tax burdens, I was very pleased to hear that. I asked the congressman respectfully, first thanked him for reaching out, second, asked him to memorialize what he had said in an email that was done recently, we're making application for a couple of jobs we have for infrastructure in our town that are not county road, and not state road, and U, U S Route nine. Uh, so we're hopeful to get some funding for that road, so that we all don't have to pay, it'll come from a fund from Washington through Congressman Kim, we're hopeful, I'll keep you informed of that. Last but not least, um, looks like this may be the reason there are several people here tonight, and we are gonna have to come up with an ordinance. Uh, you know where I stand on it, when I heard our, uh, this for recreational marijuana, and I, among many other arguments to the contrary, which is where I stand, I heard our township attorney use the word drug mule for seventeen months, and I don't wanna see that happen in our township. Uh, there was recently a write-up, and I'll finish with this, in a patch, uh, we were one of the highest ranking towns, I think it was just this week, for, um, keeping people off drugs, having a good quality life, talked about our parks, uh, and some, I think, uh, Paul had mentioned it not too long ago. Uh, it may speak to that, it may not, but that's fine, the weather feels comfortable, you don't have to, uh, but, you know, it put us in a nice spot, we worked hard, a lot of people in this room worked hard, I don't wanna take one step forward and two steps back with that. Open the floor to public comment. Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Ron Martin, forty-four Dunbury Drive. Address, or seventy Harbors? First of all, thank you for, uh, making the announcement to our community, the public, the, uh...
We stuck in the microphone, too.
Lenoka Harbor vaccination, we've had, we've, I don't think it's on. No? It's on, but it's on low, but anyway, thank you, thank you for, uh, making it available, several of our people have taken advantage of it. Um, we're supposed to be a plus fifty-five community, but it appears that, uh, the majority of the community already has shots, so I think we're sixty-five plus, but that's another story.
Well, for the record, Mr. Martin, I, I called your counterpart at Pheasant Run as well.
Well, yes, I'm sure, I'm sure, because they're, we're hearing it.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's something that's, uh, really appreciated. The other thing is, my cohort and I, and members of the group, in, uh, attending the last meeting, we came together and decided we need to provide you with additional information regarding legalized marijuana. Now, I think Mr. McDonald made a comment last, uh, meeting, that the voters voted sixty-three to thirty...
Sixty-three, thirty-six.
Sixty-three, thirty-six, and that was a vote for...
For legalization.
For legalization, and that was a statewide vote.
Right.
And that was when the polls, there were only sixty percent of the polls that had reported. Only sixty percent of the polls had re, had, had reported.
Now, he's providing our numbers for the, the way Lacey...
The Lacey Township, residents of Lacey Township voted sixty-three percent. Of those who voted...
Because there's another statistic, you're right.
Those who voted, voted for legalization of marijuana.
Okay, that's fine. Well, basically, what we, we've done is provide a little thing in here, and, um, we have some comments, obviously, we've done some additional homework. We recognize that Lacey's a great town, we recognize that we got some good news today, that, uh, the school system in, uh, Lacey, uh, had the second lowest, uh, uh, drug-related, uh, problems among all of the municipalities, so that was good news. We, uh, broke our, our thoughts down into several categories, the first, health implications, some of you have heard, some of you may not have heard, but according to the research that we have come up with, and we have included a supplement as to where, where we found this stuff, let me take this off. That, uh, children's usage contributes to psychosis and schizophrenia, ends up in addiction in one in six children who ever use it once, reduces I Q. among those who start smoking before eighteen. Marijuana also affects brain development, when used by teenagers, the drug may reduce attention, memory, and learning functions, and how the brain builds memory connections between the areas necessary for those functions. Marijuana effects on, uh, these abilities may last a long time, or maybe even permanent. In nineteen seventy-three, the T C H. level in plants was one percent. Today, if you're buying one of the many varieties of marijuana, for example, A R. seventeen, it contains forty percent. That's a strong load, and that's being augmented by phenol and some other things to even get the kick a little greater. That's a concern, that's a concern. Um, early and continued use of marijuana significantly increases risk of not completing high school, not enrolling or completing college, low educational achievement, and lower income earning. Marijuana used among high school students and college students negatively impacts their academic, academic, uh, outcomes. This is a dose-response relationship, which means the more student uses, the worse the outcome. In, uh, Larimer, uh, County, California, for example, suicide rates increased by twenty-three percent when they introduced marijuana. Eighty percent of that number was attributed to marijuana usage. Do you have any... Okay.
Can you come up for a little second?
I'm in the microphone, if you can.
Yes. Revenue and expense projections. Our group will work with our appropriate town employees to develop a profit and loss pro forma, a standard accounting tool, to determine both revenue and expense for a specific project. This, this will show the true economic profit and loss from that endeavor, and probably something that you're gonna have to consider in, in your budget. I mean, this is not included in your budget if this, this winds up in this town. Several these can be run with various assumption sets, overtime, increasing staffing, associated expenses and costs will be included. The, the effort should be extremely helpful in showing how one percent of sales is not a significant number. Again, in Larimer County, Colorado, experienced a thirty-seven percent increase in police overtime since legalization. The Colorado State Police, State Police reported a forty percent increase in D W I. as a result of marijuana. Additionally, associated expenses, D U I., alcohol, marijuana processing now takes an average of three and a half hours to process. Uh, one of the most important things they did is for every dollar used in alcohol in tax revenue, social loses ten dollars from accidents and health damage. Public cor, public courses increase, which puts the board, one of the things we found out, uh, from the F B I., the full rate per thousand, they say you should have three point four cops. We have, we have thirty thousand cops in this, a thirty thousand population.
We need a plan for that.
We need a plan for that, as far as...
I really do.
And look at the social equality implications, uh, because of legalized marijuana, fire insurance in those areas have gone up four to six percent, due to the accidents. Total fatalities have increased significantly, uh, since marijuana was instituted in Colorado, they're now up to, uh, traffic fatalities have increased, uh, by the number of seventy-nine per year. So that shows you that, uh, none of the do, you have to... per year. So that shows you that none of you have to worry about drunk drivers. We've got to worry about drug drivers. The other things that happened is that robberies and home burglaries increase. Buyers can't afford it. The area where marijuana was sold turns into bad areas. And as a result, there are a lot of robberies. People coming with money in their pockets to buy marijuana. People wanting to buy it don't have it. You have a situation. The next follow-up is that that area of stores degrades and created a potful of uselessness, if you will. So those stores are affected. Their businesses are affected for one percent of something. The fact that legalization can occur in a town, it creates a black market for sales. We know that the bad guys aren't going to sit around on their hands waiting for an opportunity. This is a ready-made, it won't be a ready-made opportunity to bring in people who will sell black market marijuana, okay, at a lower price. Probably add a higher kick to it. And then you're bringing in a totally different element. So when you look at the pristine and the very calm and the nice atmosphere we have in Lacy, with all of these transients coming in, things are not going to be the same. The wrong element comes in, more police are involved, more town facilities are involved, and it's just not worth the expense. In the same county in Colorado, they've had, since legalized marijuana has been on the books, it has a thirty-three percent increase in violent crime. So when you look at marijuana and we look at all the other things that go with it, it doesn't paint a very good picture. The last thing on that is that if all of this crowd were to come in here, what's the impact on real estate? Currently, we're expecting a good boom. Currently, housing is, the housing of the market is going as fast, as quickly as it comes onto the market. Who would want to move into a town that has legalized sales of marijuana? Who wants to risk the impact of the children on the streets? They're going to be involved in all this. So when you start looking at the associated crime associated with legalized marijuana presents a tremendous burden to the town. We don't have enough police to take care of what we're doing today. What are we going to do should that occur? And all the services, the EMTs, the hospitals, all of the related things down the line, it never seems to get addressed in the amount of money that's coming to the town if legalized from marijuana. Okay, I'll explain that in a second. When you look at that, if retail sales reach a million dollars at one percent, what's the tax revenue? How will that be offset by these additional cost causes? And we volunteered to work with you to develop a pro forma, just like in business. Put your revenue at the top line, identify all of your associated expenses, and then the bottom line should be, it's either in black or in red, and that should be a help in determining whether or not marijuana is viable, has viability in Lacy Township. Also, look at the image of the town. You're a great place to live. Do we want to become a hangout for bad crowds?
Ron, would you think if I could, Mr. Martin?
Sure.
Was on the phone for a half an hour today. Got through about nine different towns. Two of them are in, most of them are out, and they're surrounded. I'm not going to name the towns. It's a matter of public record. Most of them were against it, were have plans to do that. Seaside Heights has a plan to do that. I already know Pointeboro is there on the Board of Law. So you're going to have a situation where you're going to have a magnet. Is that what we want to be known for?
No.
Because we're on a bird job unless we prohibit it.
No. I don't see it as a viable alternative for the town. The town will change completely. This will no longer be the nice little place to get off Exit Seventy-four and enjoy your time off. Traffic congestion, all the associated things that come with it. One only has to look at the places. Denver, in the city of Denver, there are one hundred and seventy-two retail outlets. One hundred and seventy-two. And if you look, do the research, and you look at the areas and where they're located, quite frankly, they all turn into dumps. You get people just hanging around, trying to scrounge up enough money to buy things. But they're not buying it legally. Why pay the legal price when you can get for a quarter of the price the black market material? So what's the benefit from the town? You incur expenses. You're not getting the associated revenue. That's no big deal. So that doesn't make any sense from our perspective. Now with children, especially in the good ones, children are walking around. These gangs fight for territory. And they're not bashful having a gang fight in the middle of a parking lot or near a school, as we've seen. So therefore, again, I ask, what's the benefit? From our perspective, there isn't a benefit. And I will gladly work with anyone, we will work with anyone, in developing the pro forma because it will open your eyes as to what the true benefits are. And from what we see, there are none. The amount of revenue on a million dollars to the town would be ten thousand. What would be the overtime cost? Overtime in Lorimer County went up thirty-three percent just as a result of legalization. So start, we have to start thinking, this is great. You get revenue on one side, but let's finish the equation. Look at all the associated expenses. And I bet my last dollar, it comes up red. In every place where it is, it's red. There are eighty-four billion dollars' worth of sales nationally among the ten states that have legalized. If you just take a straight average of that per state, and then look at the cost that they have incurred, car insurance going up four percent. You don't smoke it, I don't smoke it, you don't smoke it. Why do we have to have car insurance going up? The fatalities from car accidents, the youth that's lost, the suicide rate among twenty-to-twenty-five-year-olds in Colorado, the one place that we work at, increased twenty-three percent. Eighty percent of that number was attributed to drug use, marijuana. And the marijuana that they're buying and the marijuana that they're using isn't good enough, isn't strong enough. So they mix it with fentanyl and other wonderful little treats. They get depressed. They're twenty-five years old, they've been doing this for years. They suddenly get up one morning and say, what the hell's the use? I'm a loser. I got nothing to live for. I can't do a damn thing. I missed my career. I missed opportunities for an education. I missed an opportunity for a family life. I missed life. And so what do they do? They kill themselves. That's a hell of a thing to have on your town trademark. So we don't want that. It doesn't fit. It doesn't pay. It doesn't belong. Anything else?
Just the last thing. I'd like to thank the folks that do our school system as far as stuff in town. Again, as Ron mentioned, usually when stuff comes out for us at school, we're in the middle or the bottom of the list as far as stuff like that. Today, by the stuff they put about the drugs and alcohol as far as stuff during the pandemic, we were three thirty-one out of three thirty-two, which being at the bottom was the best. So-
That's a good thing to be at the bottom.
So I thank our teachers, Board of Education, police, what you guys do. I thank people in town for what they do for that.
We're in a good spot. I will push for the introduction of a prohibition ordinance, and we'll see where it comes out. Maybe we'll win, maybe I'll lose. That's the game. But that's what I want to put forth. People, like I said last time, rarely going to hear a political person talk like this. If it's my downfall, and people say, get Kira Toh out because he planted his flag on this, I accept it, and I'll spend a lot more time with my daughter and my wife. I hope that's not the case. That's where I'm coming out.
We called the Bureau of Elections, the county Bureau of Elections, and asked for some information. We have to fill out an upper request. We're looking at the demographics of who the voters were, not who they were by name, but by age group. And then contrast that, that vote against all other votes that have been submitted. And that will give us another view, another perspective of what the needs of the community are. So there's a lot more work that we're doing, a lot more work that you, the council members, have to do than the administrative staff has to do. We will continue, if you want, supplying you with information. We don't want to stand up here as adversaries. That's not our role. Our role is to assist where we live. We chose to live here. I own our house, a real wife and I own our house. We've made an investment in town. I'll be really, really ticked off if things happen and suddenly I have to wake up in the morning and say, we screwed up. We really did. We picked the wrong town. Can't do that. Don't want to do that. There's too much to lose, too much tradition, too many years of hard work by a lot of people. Some of them are even you, who have decided to put time and effort in to continue to keep this to be a good environment. The rest of this, yeah.
You stay right up there. Let it all be part of it.
That's it, yeah.
It's right here in fifty years. It's right there.
That's it. So we thank you for your attention. And Godspeed. Wish you luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Name an address, please, sir.
Robert Stefanowitz, nineteen eighteen, Lacy Road. Let me start with, a couple of years ago, I gave you a petition here, remember? Let me, I'll-
Shooting range out on Lacy Road.
Yes. We, the surrounding residents of the Groundswipers Gun Club, are requesting the Township Committee to adapt the sound ordinance limiting gunfire emanating from the Groundswipers to the original two days a week. They did, for thirty-some years, they shot two days a week. Now they're shooting seven days a week. Heavy artillery, pistols, shotguns now, four days a week. Every four to six seconds, a gunshot is going off there. Now, I did a little thing. I measured the lead in one pellet, one bullet. It's one ounce. I estimate there's over two hundred pounds of lead every day that they're shooting there, falling in the ground, contaminating the property. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but they're on hazardous waste DEP cleanup. I don't know if you're aware of it, my property is on the DEP because they contaminated my property to the point that I couldn't move, I couldn't move if I wanted to. Nobody would buy my property. The parts per million is four hundred. I have fifty thousand parts per million on some parts of my property. Fifty thousand. A spider won't crawl across it. And nobody's doing nothing. They're not cleaning it up. But anyway, this is for the noise. And also, they might say, well, they have liability from, civil liability from noise. Well, the ordinance is limited immunity from civil liability for noise. That's the New Jersey statute, which means they have some liability to be a decent neighbor, which they are not. Now, use have an ordinance, and it's got to do with noise. And one of it says, any, well, it's one of the wording, anyway, "Any excessive, unnecessary, unusually loud sounds which either annoy, injure, disturb, or endanger the comfort, health, repose, peace, or safety of others, which are so harsh, prolonged, or unusual in their use, time, and place so as to annoy, disturb, or endanger the comfort, health, repose, peace, safety of others." A noise disturbance, by your definition, is "Any noise which endangers or injures the safety or health of humans or animals, or annoys, or disturbs a reasonable person, or normal sensitivities, or endangers, or injuries personal or real property." They're a violation of all that. I can't sit on my deck every four to six seconds. It's ridiculous. I can't take it. Now, your general noise prohibits the making, creating, or permitting of any unreasonably loud, disturbing, or unnecessary noise within the municipality is hereby prohibited. The making, creating, or permitting of any noise of such character, intensity, or duration that is determined to the life, health, or welfare of any individual either steadily or intermittently, a noise disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, peace, or safety of any individual is prohibited. I mean, do you have anything to say about it?
Yes, sir.
What?
Noise is handled by the police. Have you made a call to the police?
They told me it's up to use to do something. That their hands are tied, that there's, that they can't do anything. That's what they told me.
Is it ordinance?
It's in your, it's in, I looked it up on your miss, it's the exact words.
The chief's in the house tonight, as it were.
The chief liked to look at my property. He was afraid to walk the property line whenever shooting, for fear of getting shot. Yeah.
Ron, I know this has been, this has been going on for a long time now.
Five years.
Yeah. So whoa. Is there no ordinances, Veronica? What is?
I just, I just said with someone, that's the wording on your site.
Has John been called out there?
John was out there, if I'm not mistaken, recently for lighting ordinance.
Yeah, and they just added some extra lighting, LED lighting.
Again, that's the police. And there's no open code violations as of right now. And the last time he was out there was due to a lighting ordinance. And I do believe this was lost in Superior Court, if I'm not mistaken, right? Didn't you go to Superior Court with this?
No.
Or maybe we took somebody to court?
Maybe. I didn't, I had nothing to do with that.
Yeah, we-
I thought, I thought you went to Superior Court. Somebody went to Superior-
If I remember correctly, I could be wrong.
Well, that was when he went for application.
Right. But you were concerned they were shooting towards your property, and they-
Well, they shot on my property, yeah.
And then we had them move it so it was shooting away from your property. Now, I could be dead wrong on it. I'm just trying to remember. It's a couple of years ago. And we had somebody, we were in court on this. We actually, we had somebody go out there. It was John. And I think we filed a lawsuit on this against them.
Well, what Mr. Downey is saying is that-
Well, I've never heard anything.
No, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect you. It would have been us against-
It was lost in Superior Court. That's what he said. Mr. Downey just gave it up.
Who measured the lead content that you just referenced a minute ago?
An LSRP. That's a license site reading person.
So it's up in Superior, is that what?
Yeah.
It was lost in Superior Court.
So maybe, can our, can our-
Okay.
Can our attorney shed some light to put him on the spot?
No, he wasn't here, he wasn't being adjudicated.
I'd have to look in. This is the first time.
Right. But-
Is there anything?
But we just, we lost in Superior Court.
You have, you have the-
They have a right.
We get a decibel checker out there. Decimeter, will check the noise. The other thing, if there is contamination, and there's, and that's highlands area-
I don't care. I called it.
There should be, there should be somebody from the DEP checking that, not just a private company. So nobody here wants to see anybody get their land infiltrated by lead.
Yeah, let's destroy it.
Well, they're saying that-
Oh, I have the paperwork to prove it.
I don't doubt it.
We had soil samples taken, approximately thirty-some samples, and at least a high twenties that came up over four hundred parts per million.
Let us, let us assimilate this. I don't want to jump the gun. Let us review this with the township attorney, and we'll get back with you. We will give you your telephone.
All right. And now, another thing. This is outdoor firearms range facility standards. This is Division of Criminal Justice in New Jersey. They're shooting, I don't know, thirty-oh-sixes, whatever. I called a guy on Monday, I call him Cannon Man. Every ten minutes, he'll shoot off around, that if you were standing there, you would jump. Tuesdays, they shoot five hours probably. Wednesdays, pistols, rifles, whatever. Thursdays, they're shooting till ten, well, probably about eight o'clock tonight, maybe. And then Fridays, they're shooting. And Saturdays now, they're doing another shotgun thing. All day, they're shooting. This is going on every day. There's not one day that I can go out on my deck that there are high-powered rifle, pistol, or shotguns ain't going off. That is, it's just inexcusable. I can't take it no more. And also, they could be putting up dirt barriers and stuff, like for their, they're supposed to, according to these outdoor range facilities. The range should be in a relatively safe and isolated area. That's a joke. It's not. They should have, they're supposed to have burns, impact burns. The impact burn for ranges with a twenty-five yard capacity limit should be at least twelve feet high. And for those with a fifty yard limit, at least twenty feet high. These- These impact burns should be free from rocks, stones, or objects that tend to increase and possibly ricochet. They're supposed to have side burns. Both sides of the range should contain side burns for safety purposes. They should be at least eight feet high, and extend from the impact burn to the maximum shooting distance. Their primary purpose is to stop any misdirected rounds that may tend to travel slightly to one side or the other, or by accident ricochet. These burns should not be used as impact burns. The range surface should be relative clear of any objects, stones, excessive growth that may tend to enhance the possibility of ricochet or create bad footing conditions. The entire range shooting area should be relatively, relatively flat and level.
Sir, one more time, what, what document are you reading from? What source?
This is, uh, just state of New Jersey, Division of Criminal Justice Police Training. You could type in Outdoor Firearms Range Facility Standards. They couldn't care less. I can, I can see when they're shooting.
Hold on a second. You brought an issue here, this is what we're gonna do. I'm gonna talk to the Department of Building tomorrow, have him listen and review what you said, and we're gonna see if things are in code, in compliance. If need be, we'll get a decibel meter out there, somebody from the county, or somebody from this department here, this municipality, and we're gonna check on what you're saying.
But nobody regulates them. The state police, you call up the state police.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the state police have to, they regulate that.
So state police, I talked to Furman, I think his name was, from the state police, and he said they only do indoor ranges, that nobody does outdoor ranges. He told me that the local government's supposed to do something about it, and I talked to Chris Reed, and Chris Reed says the state's supposed to do it. So it just goes, it's a blame thing going back and forth. And in the meantime, we can't sit on our deck without a high-powered rifle or pistol going, a shotgun, every day. I know, I know I moved next to, next to a, a range there. I lived in this township for sixty, over 60 years. I'm one of the longest residents probably still alive around here. But we, we had, we had 50 acres, we sold it with the Pine Lands Act, it basically made it useless. We sold 38 to the state. We kept 12. I ended up with seven because nobody in my family wanted it. My kids wanted the building in the back. Now it's a toxic waste zone that will never be used by anybody. And they did it. They won't, they won't clean it up. They offered to sift the pellets. You can't sift the pellets if the ground's contaminated. They wanted to give me the ground back. I, I have extensive experience in hazmat. And I know that the soil was supposed to get tested, and I wouldn't sign off on it. And they, they're just fighting me tooth and nail. They have no intentions of cleaning up their property or mine, as far as I know.
You've been dealing with this for a while, you went through the proper avenues. Let us have a shot at it, and see if we can get some resolution, one way or another. In the meantime, if you're talking and making claims about lead contamination in the soil, you may want to consider calling the D E P and having someone go out there and test it.
Well, that's what the L S R P did. He, uh...
But that's a, that's a private company.
That's what you have to have in a state of New Jersey now. You have to have an L S R P on the site, and he does the soil sampling and says it to the D E P. The D E P doesn't come out and sample. They have these, maybe in some cases they do, but I talked to the D E P, they weren't coming out and sampling.
Yes, a licensed site remediation professional.
Yes, you have to have that now. And they had, they had, you know, they came out and they did the soil samples and submitted to D E P. Now, they had soil samples taken on their property, and they're already past the deadline. I would like to know about that, why they haven't submitted any paperwork on any cleanup. Now, if they're gonna continue this operation out there, they got a thing that I believe they call cradle to the grave. When you shoot the bullet, you're responsible for that bullet forever. You have to, you're responsible, just like if I go by your house and throw a piece of garbage in your yard, I should pick it up. I shouldn't be able to go by your house every day and throw a little garbage in your yard. And that's what's happening. And even theirs, what they're, they'll tell you they're cleaning it up, but they're shooting in the woods. If any one of these want to come out there, when they're shooting, you can hear the pellets going in the woods. Nobody's going out there and picking them pellets in the woods. And over time, lead degrades. It's acidic soil, over time, lead degrades, gets into the soil, and you have to get rid of the soil, and that's very expensive, and that's what the problem is. They, they don't want to do it because it's too much money. It would probably, it might bankrupt them.
You made your case.
Okay.
I'm gonna make sure that someone reaches out to you by early next week. I'm gonna re-review it. I will talk to Mr. Reed and other employees. And we will have, we have your number on file, correct?
You know what, Veronica, just write, don't announce it here, just write it on the back.
That's your number?
Thanks.
Thanks for your time. Any other comments? Yes, sir? Name and address, please.
Joe Bransford, 113 Amber Mist Way. Good evening, committee. Last committee meeting, I had asked what the committee might be thinking of doing with the 2.8 million dollars we expect from COVID relief. And the mayor started to give an answer, and then Virginia, Veronica, I'm not sure we understood your answer properly, but this is what we heard. That the 2.8 million, you have to deduct all the $1,400 checks that people got.
That's what we were told.
And that would mean in a town like 30,000 people...
Exactly.
2,000 people eats up that two...
It's signed up money.
There's zero money.
Right, exactly.
And that is still, that is still the...
I don't know, we haven't gotten, we have no further updates than what the mayor and what you guys know. There's been no communication, no further updates.
I have talked to Commissioner Quin about this. The best that he can do is we can spend it. Half of it in one year, then we have to spend it all by...
2024.
December 31st, 2024. We only get half of it if it's the 1.4 million.
2.8 million.
Yeah, we split it in half, you get half of it, then you gotta get another half of it. We have no idea what restrictions, how much it really is, if it's minus the, the $1,400 check. We have no idea.
But if Veronica is right, there's no money.
We don't get a dime.
We would actually owe money.
So we did... We heard correctly, that was...
Yeah.
You know what? Know how, know you knew you heard correctly? It doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make any sense.
You knew you heard correctly.
And we can't get a straight answer out of anybody.
Right. It's, it's government.
Any other comments from the floor? Yes, please. Go ahead, see if you can go.
Sorry, Harry Scott.
Microphone, name and address?
Debbie Gubernot Smith, Carr Street, Park River, New Jersey. Am I allowed to ask how all of you stand on the distribution?
Is that about recreational marijuana?
Yes. Can I ask where you stand?
You're a resident, yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask where you stand?
I'm, I'm against it, but it's a complicated issue. I voted no, I voted no on the ballot question, and given a shot, I'd probably vote no again, although I think it should probably go up for a referendum. That's my true feelings on it.
Okay.
Referendum.
Can't hear you.
Oh, can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Can I repeat?
No, this is why I say you don't want to be heard? I'll be heard. Not a problem there. Let me explain this. You know, many things down, you know, in, how can I put this? In the business that I'm in, you know, at one time, alcohol was illegal, prohibition. I mean, but everybody enjoys it today. This, I think, after speaking to different people, I have to tell you, I'm probably, I'm probably leaning toward banning. All right? But it's only because of different things that were explained, and, and I'm still thinking about it. I said, I, I did say I was thinking about it. Because I looked at what some people brought up about the financial end, and I'm a financial guy. I, I, when you do something, you're in it to make money, okay? In any type of business, okay? But this year, if this what it costs, and we're not making no money on this, then, and it can bring in bad element, then, you know, I, I would probably look at it. That's why the last time when I said I had no, you know, I abstained from anything to talk about it, I still don't have all the information. You know, people can tell you one thing, you're making a ton of money on something, but you're really not, you know? And I, and I bring up the business that I'm in for the simple reason of, we're so regulated, it's unbelievable. The A B C runs us. I mean, they can commit to our establishment right down the street tomorrow morning and find some little thing wrong, and lock that door.
Gentlemen?
We know how he is, right? So...
We know, we know.
So here's where I stand. Last year, what we did was, first, we had two issues. Prior to the legislation legalizing marijuana, Mr. Curatola was instrumental for a number of years of pushing for an ordinance against, against legalization and detention. And I was against doing that, for the simple reason that I knew all the information wasn't out there. And consequently, what happened was, we did incur the cost and went into motions of passing an ordinance, and of course, the state of New Jersey legalized it and made anything that we passed null and void. I was in favor of medicinal marijuana in detention, and for the simple reason that in the people I speak to and what I follow on social media, maybe some, some people don't believe in that, the trouble incurred with having to go to Atlantic City or wherever else was, was really a hardship for people, and I'm about bringing convenience to the residents of Lacy Township. Where we're at right now is, at first, I was leaning towards allowing recreational cultivation and distribution in Lacy Township. Again, for the only reason, I don't think it's a revenue issue. I don't think the revenue is, is, is really, first salary, 2% on, on sales, 1% on cultivation. Again...
On the cash business.
On, okay. Well, now it's changing, and here's why. And this is, this is the point I'm, I'm leading towards. Now the federal government's getting involved. There's legislation being proposed at the federal level to change that from a cash business to now enable it to be a regular business, for lack of a better term. So the other issue I have, and I have a serious issue, is the portion of the legislation that relates to underage usage, and handcuffs our police officers, which kind of is a little weird, handicaps our police officers from enforcing that. I have a real problem with that. So right now, we, we have a period of time, you know, I know Mr. Curatola said we need to act now. Well, we don't need to act now. There are, it's a constantly changing battle. So until I get more information, until I see where the government, the federal government legislation is, until I see, you know, the cannabis, and I actually, Governor Murphy appointed a Cannabis Regulatory Commission. And they are just now determining what the guidelines for retail distribution is, just now. They're having their first meeting tomorrow, so we don't know what it is. So before I make a knee-jerk reaction and spend the residents' money, and, and vote for an ordinance that we have to now enforce, I want to wait and get more information. Now, we have 180 days from the passage of legislation. I think it's August 22nd, we have to have our second reading of our ordinance in. So until, I, I want to wait till the last minute. I would love to go for a referendum. The problem is, if we wait for a referendum, it's past that 180 days. So what I would like to do is explore ways for us to push it forward, where we can let the rest of the speak again. Now, you know, it's been said that people didn't know what they were voting for. Well, it kind of reminds me of when Nancy Pelosi said, "We have to pass the legislation to know what it, to know what it means."
Yes, but one of my major points is, there's a huge, huge difference between legalization and distribution in your town.
You're absolutely, yep.
And I know Mr. McDonald said last, at the last meeting, that it was a matter of convenience. I understand the, for, for recreational marijuana. I understand the convenience aspect of it for medical marijuana, because obviously, if, if somebody is in medical need of it, you don't want them having to go to Atlantic City. But for recreation, there is no grounds to make it convenient for people.
Well, right now, because Steve, questions aren't answered. We don't know what it's gonna look like. Now, I was contacted by a gentleman who, angel lobbyist, who offered, and I'm gonna look down the road, to have us tour medicinal distribution centers and see the security measures that are taken. And I'm guessing, and we don't know yet, we don't know what facilities are gonna look like as they relate to retail distribution. Are they gonna be the medicinal distribution centers? We don't know. You know, these are all questions that are gonna be answered. So you're asking me to answer a question before I have all the information. So I can't give you a yes or no, a right or wrong. I have to tell you that right now, I'm undecided.
Okay, well, I, I can say that a, a lot of us, our fear is that if we don't come to the meetings every other week, that it's gonna get slipped under the rug when we're, we're not here.
You're welcome to come to the meetings and sit and, and listen. I, I, I hate, hate to say, I enjoyed the gentleman who came up from the grounds about the bullets, it was a nice change, you know? It reminds me of the old days, where we had some contentious. But you know, I know many of the people out here, you know, and, and I, and I speak to people from both sides of the aisle, who are in favor, who are not in favor. I understand the reasons why, but you know, I have to represent all the people. I don't do it, I, see, I don't make a decision from my personal feelings. I make a decision based on what's best for the residents or the township.
Well, as, as a resident of township...
As a resident, right.
I am also, I have four children in the school system. My husband is a lifelong resident, I'm a 31-year resident. There are some things that I would like to, to bring up. I am very active.
You didn't ask it yet.
Um...
Geez, that's how...
I'm sitting there!
Sure, okay. I actually said, the last thing, and I, I stand by this, was that, while we had 63% of those who voted, they said yes to recreational marijuana.
To legalization.
To legalization.
Not to distribution.
Okay. All right. I also said, and I stand by this, that had they known what the law was, it wouldn't have passed.
I agree.
Okay. So with that, but I'm also...
So that 63% gets thrown out, then?
I'm also one of these guys that rails against politicians who don't do what the people ask to do. Okay? Yeah?
If they, if they voted to legalize prostitution, would you want to prostitute in front of your house if it was convenient for your needs?
Well, no, no, don't compare, but let's talk about, you know, I know people talk about, you know, retail distribution centers, and again, I'm not in favor, but what we were talking about was zoning it, just like medicinal, in the business park. Yes.
But in the business park, there, there's, that will cause those businesses to suffer. No one wants to, to have their business next to this. I, I, I mean, I can petition the people in the business park to have them come in, but as of right now, there's a gymnastics studio. Do you really think that those parents are going to be apt to bring their children there if there's a distribution center right next door?
Great point.
So you have to, you're, you're really cutting these businesses off at the knees. There's a lot of family businesses in the business park. It's not just, you know, you can't just stick it in the corner of the township and think that, all right, I'm gonna tuck it into the business park, and...
I'm sorry, go back to your...
I think I know where you stand.
No, 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 I don't, I don't think you don't. I don't, I don't think you don't. I have said, I can go either way. It doesn't make a difference to me. At my age, guess what? I'm not gonna partake. This is not gonna happen. So that's why I said, you know, 63% of the people go against the people's wishes.
There's a lot of family businesses in the business park. It's not just, you know, you can't just stick it in the corner of the township and think that, "All right, I'm going to tuck it into the business park and..."
I'm sorry. Go back to your...
I think I know where he stands.
No, no, no. I don't think you don't.
Okay.
I don't think you don't. I have said, I can go either way. It doesn't make a difference to me. At my age, guess what? I'm not going to partake. This is not going to happen. So, that's why I said, you know, 63% of the people go against the people's wishes. Now, there's other, there's other reasons for it. If we ban it, it's already here in Lacey Township. It's already here. It's not going away. Illegal drugs is in Lacey Township, whether we like it or not. Okay? And we ban it, it's not going away. So, we still have the police problems. Trust me, I talk to the chief about this all the time. And yes, the attorney general is stepping it up, where we're going to have to do something. Putting more mandates on the police department, regardless whether we have it or not. Now, $10,000 is not going to break, make or break this town. So, I understand that, but I have to look at the whole picture. Okay? I get it. Now, let me finish. I get, you guys are against it. Absolutely against it. And I understand that. I can go either way on this thing. I have always said that. I have always said that. But when 63% of people say, "Hey, we want legalization," okay, you have to go with it. That's...
That's legalization.
Right.
But again, distribution, they are two, that's like comparing apples and oranges.
Want me to tell you something? You brought a point up to me that I didn't realize, and I want to...
Not the prostitution.
No. Please, no. Don't listen to that, David. You brought up something. You legalized marijuana, but you didn't say nothing about distribution.
No one wants it in their backyard.
Good point.
No one.
But...
Everybody, it gives the town a stigma. It will cause people from all of the towns that are not, not going to have it in theirs. It's going to bring everybody into this town. That is not the environment of people that we want brought into this town. It's not who I want around my children. It's not who I want in the parks where my kids are going to play football at Gilly Park. It's not anywhere in this town. There is no room for it in this town.
Let me say one thing, if I could, just cut you off for a second.
Because I have many kids.
I colleague, Mr. McDonald, say, "We already have some bad things. There's already some drugs in the town."
There's drugs in every town.
Right.
And so, okay, so, the reason I believe that that's really not a strong argument, you see, that's like saying, there's already murder. There's murder in major cities, there's murder in the state of New Jersey, United States.
There's been murders in Lacey Township.
Wait a second. What's the difference if there is, what's the difference if there is aggravated assault? Why care if there's aggravated assault? That's, I don't, I think that's a bankrupt argument. I mean, tell me, again, I say, what are the good reasons for it? Reasons why it's not good for children? Reasons why it's not, doesn't make fiscal sense? We just passed a very expensive budget tonight. So, make the case for it. Make the case for it. It's easy for me to make the case against it because it has a long and storied history. Make the case for it. Don't tell me, "We already have one thing, and so what's the difference if we have another?" That's a bankrupt argument. Make the case for it.
I agree.
But I have to say another thing. Everybody here, I guess, is against it. You're the people for it.
That's my case.
Well, they weren't called by the mayor to come and speak.
Right. I'm asking the question, that's all.
That's why they're not here.
Listen, he didn't call me. I am very active in these schools and I am very passionate about living in Lacey Township. I am a proud resident. Like I said, my husband's a lifelong resident. I have four children, one graduating high school this year. It is, I, I really am very passionate about what it does to the children in this community.
And as I am, because I have two children who went through Lacey Township School, as well as many, many children by association because they're all their friends, and I associate with them. And I only want to do what's best for Lacey Township. And I interact, not just here, out there in Lacey Township for a lot of people, and I hear from both sides. And yes, I know, I know the detriment of it, and I'll try and make an educated decision. But I'll tell you what I'm not going to do. I'm not going to make an educated decision for someone comes to the microphone and tries to pressure me, or someone on his dais tries to pressure me.
Oh, I'm not pressuring you.
Okay? Well, you kind of are.
Well, I'm, no, I'm a little pressured.
It's okay.
I'm very opinionated.
But I'm just telling you, I'm not going to make a decision based on that. I'm going to make a decision based on the facts and what I think is best for the township. Not my, not my personal, you know, you know, well, my personal experience, but that's what I'm going with.
I would like to point out that three major organizations in this town that all of you fund and back are adamantly against it. The police department, the recreation department, and the municipal alliance. The heads of those organizations are all against it. And if you value the chief of police, if you value him as a chief to keep this community safe, then I really think that you should value his professional opinion and his assessment on what the situation would become and take that to heart.
And I do. And as well as his command staff and his officers, I value all their opinions, as well as the school board, you know, all, as well as the volunteers, the ambulance squads who see this every day, you know, I value all their opinions, you know? But I value facts. And I, I think we may, we jumped the gun last year, and I just want to get all the facts, that's all. And I welcome you all coming, and just because I point counterpoint, doesn't mean...
Oh, you can counterpoint.
You know, that's what life's all about. I think it's great. I like this dialogue.
Okay.
Long dialogue.
Hold on. Sorry, these notes were a little sloppy.
That's right.
Written while I was at work today. I think I might have reached all my points.
Look at that.
Very good.
Very good.
Good job.
Do you, but overall, basically, you stated, or everyone stated, that you are here for the people of the township.
Absolutely.
Overall, do you think it would have a negative impact or a positive impact on the overall image and the overall value of our properties?
So, what I've looked at, and I guess some of them speak, what I've looked at, I look at surrounding towns as well. I believe that Little Lake Harbor, which has the medicinal distribution center, will turn to a recreational distribution. I believe where a town has already made inroads, they are trying to possibly go to a recreational distribution. So, I guess, I have to determine, do I want my residents staying in Lacey Township under the safety of my police force? Or do I want them risking going to...
No, go to the other towns.
Maybe a municipality who is not going to take, so, you know, that's what I have to, have to, you know, I, again, the Cannabis Legislation Committee, whatever you want to call it, that the governor appointed is meeting tomorrow. You know, listen, let's, I want to get all the facts before I make a concerted decision on what my overall or final opinion is. If that sounds like being a politician, that's what it sounds like. I'm not too worried about it, you know?
That sounds a little bit like it.
I always, I always stand behind what I say. I, you know, I don't...
Is that the salami? Is that... Let me jump in. Let me jump in. I'll, let me say this. I have talked to other committee members throughout Ocean County. They're all, for the most part, they're putting the brakes on this until they get more facts on it. And one of the things that disturbed me, and I talked to some committee men about it, was they changed it a little bit, the under-21 law, a little bit. Now, they're going back, and I read this in the paper, and I got, talked to our counselor about it in executive session, is that one of the things I was very happy to see was that nobody, you couldn't grow your own plants. Now, there's a talk in Trenton of letting them, letting you grow your own plants. Now, the question then becomes is, how do you police that if we say no? How do you police that? Let me finish. How do you police that? You want police officers going in your backyard without a warrant to check? Okay, that's, how do you police this? This is the other part of this, this, on the plant going inside. I would be voting against that. Because that, if you talk to the people in Colorado, and I have had some friends out there in Colorado, and I've talked to them, and they will point to that, that you could actually buy other people's rights to grow their plants. So, you could buy, you could have like 15 or 18 plants, because your neighbors have six, and you have six, and grandma has six, and you put, you can put 30 or 40 plants and be legal. That's where the real problem is, if you talk to the people in Colorado, is that they're able to grow their own plants.
And New York is allowing that. Part of New York's legal is allowing self-preservation.
So, that's my concern, is, and I want to see where this ends up. And we're not the only ones that are going to sit and wait until August 22nd or 28th, or whatever it may be. Okay?
There are a lot of towns that are not...
They're going to get a lot of pressure to make sure that what's out there. So, I will wait and see. I don't want to vote on this until maybe June or July, at the earliest. I'll be honest with you, I'll be very honest with you.
You know what I would love to see also? I'd love to see the county step up.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, I know the county commissioners, the county health department, they haven't come out, the sheriff hasn't come out for or against. I'd like to see, you know, that's, that's the thing, you know?
But if the people in this town, the major organizations that you back and you hire these people for their professional opinions, if they are against it, why isn't that enough? Why? Because if they, if they love this town, if they live in this town, they've raised their children in this town, why isn't their professional opinion enough? Why? Because the county doesn't live here.
No. Their opinion weighs heavily. It's not the end-all be-all, though. Just like no one's single opinion is end-all be-all. Now, I respect their, and I expect the professionalism in their, and I respect their professional opinion. But of course, you know, you never go to one source.
So, then what are the pros? What do you see as, as of right now?
Right now, I don't, the only pro I see is convenience. It's the only pro I see.
Oh, God, that makes my head want to explode by saying that, we're going to come hot town because it's convenient for people.
But, you know, but I'm waiting. I mean, I just don't understand what the rush is. I mean, I don't understand what the rush is.
Because again, I...
This way, if we get all the information, see, what happened last year, when we passed the ordinance, and I was against it, because I knew it was a waste of time. If we pass an ordinance right now, who's to say the federal government doesn't come down and say, "Well, you know, just like the state of New Jersey came down and said, 'Your ordinance is useless,' the federal government says, 'Your ordinance is useless now.'" So, why, I mean, why am I going to spend the money to, because there's a cost associated with it, that, and do it wrong, and then possibly be open to litigation from someone who wants to come in here? Let's get all the facts, and if we're going to pass something against it, we pass something with teeth that stands up in court. You know, that's, and that's the point. I mean, what, what is the rush?
Mark, if I could, I don't think we wasted time. We did what we were allowed to do as a sovereign municipality. And then the governor, the governor, we were going up until February, and let me tell you something. The Board of County Commissioners did resolve against it. That resolution was passed.
This year?
Yes.
This year?
Sheriff Mike Masternardi is not for legalized recreational...
The Commissioners passed the resolution?
Yes, they did.
I asked Mr. McQuinney, he said no.
Yes, they did. Yes, they did. He did that...
But wait a minute, hold on a second here, Pete.
A matter of public record.
Hold on, Pete.
Ask him again, you misunderstood.
Hold on, Pete.
I just would like to end by saying, I would be extremely disappointed in this township committee, if you allow it. As a resident, as a parent, I, we are, as an Alliance member, we are fighting an uphill battle every single day.
Again, don't, don't make it sound like I'm fighting you, you know?
No, and I'm just...
And I'm on my soapbox saying I want to do it. All I'm saying is, get the information, you know? And if we're going to pass it, just like last year, you know, the original draft of the ordinance, I wasn't in favor of it, but then we did a second draft that I thought was better and fit, fit what we needed better. Unfortunately, what happened, I thought was going to happen, of course, the governor passed legislation, and it basically made it null and void. So...
And when you say something with teeth, I think the 63 to 36 or 37, that has no teeth in it, because if you ask anybody, "Would you like it next door to your home where your children are playing basketball in front of their house?"
I agree.
Not a chance would you ever have that.
Hundred percent.
But leave with this information. There is an opportunity to ordinance out of it now. That was what the legislation passed this end of February said. Every municipality is having this conversation. Several in Ocean County already were minced out, which makes us a magnet if we don't.
Absolutely.
So, have a clear idea of what's going on here.
And that's not the clientele we want in this town.
And watch out, eat and vote. That's what I say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Heather Scanlon, from the Lacey Municipal Alliance. Actually, there are a lot of good things, I think it's a lot of good discussion. I didn't really think I needed to say something, but now I think I, there are a couple of things I need to address. But first, I do want to say that I'm really, I feel very grateful that people have taken the time to really look at this issue and done some research. Some private citizens, Mr. Martin and the gentleman that was with him, took a lot of time to research this, which I wish many people had done this previous to this, previous to the vote. You know, this, this whole thing began many, many years ago by people who used, people with chronic, talked about people with chronic pain and how, how bad they needed something to help, and convinced the public that medical marijuana was safe. Those people then turned around and just turned the whole operation, the whole campaign into saying recreational marijuana is also safe. And nothing is further from the truth. And those people are the people who are going to benefit from this. They're the people who want to make money off of it. Plain and simple. Is it safe? There's not one study that proves it's safe at all. Somebody said to me, just like about a week ago, "Well, at least it's natural. Well, so is lead, mercury, and arsenic, but I don't think we should put that in our bodies." But here we are. Here we are. Legalization is here. But I do have to address the fact that you, as mayor, does not have to ask the Alliance people to get up and address this issue. This is a very important issue for us. We are here on our own. We've been behind following things like this for many years, and we will keep doing it, the private property ordinance, and so many other things that we, it's very important to us, and nobody has to ask us to come.
I know he asked you to come last meeting. I know he did. I know that he asked the municipal alliance to come and support it.
No, I've been...
I, I, I know.
I reach out, I, Mark...
And I asked him to come. Okay, listen, I'm not going to go count the points for you, but, you know, it doesn't matter, you're right. But no, Mr. Julion asked a question, "Why were the people who were for it?" And I said, "Well, they weren't invited." And I, it wasn't my, it wasn't my understanding.
This is a public meeting.
Ma'am, ma'am?
Excuse me. Heather has the mic.
One microphone.
There it goes, out of my head. But seriously, now, what we're looking at, and I think the point is, we all know that we're not, it's hard to come out to meetings. A lot of us are, have other things that we're involved in. Unfortunately, the people that you see here usually are involved in other things. So, we, we need to know then, what is, what is the plan? What are our options now?
Well, we were informed by township attorney, we can't talk about this amongst us because it's a violation of sunshine. So, this is our opportunity to talk about it.
In other words, well, the opt-out, originally, it was 180 days to opt-out or opt-in?
And that clock's ticking.
No, opt-out, automatically. If we don't do anything by August 22nd...
It's automatically five years.
You're automatic, and then five years...
Right, and it's five years.
Correct, correct.
So, we have 180 days. So, and my point is this, too. We can take our time. We don't have to, we don't have to jump into this, even if it's something that we want to do down the line. Let's wait and see what other, how it comes out. I don't think any of us want to see be the experiment. We don't want to see, we don't want to be the only town or the, one of two towns that has it in Ocean County and that people are coming here. Let's take our time, let's hit the pause button, and let's see how things go.
Originally, what I really wanted, and I had talked to our counselor about it, was to put it out to referendum in November, to see if we could, some way we could extend keeping it, can't sell it, can't legalize it until November, and then let the late people of Lacey Township have a second bite of the apple and see what they have to say. Unfortunately, because the way the law is written, we're stuck with the 180 days limit. So, that's out the window. So, that's what I really wanted to do, is get, get it back into the people's hands and see what happens with it.
The other thing I did want to address, something that Mr. Dykoff wrote up, is, I understand what you mean, I feel the same way, and I felt, and I voiced my concern about, well, why aren't we hearing from the Board of Health or other organizations? They cannot. I've asked those questions. They are not allowed. They receive state money, they are not allowed to address this issue. They cannot come out for or against it. And that's why you don't hear from them.
From who?
The county Board of Health.
The Board of Health. The other organization we work very closely with is RWJ Barnabas Health, and the DART Coalition, and they are not allowed to be a proponent or speak against anything that comes through the state. I have been also told I cannot speak against the legislation. So I can speak about whether or not we should have it in our town, which is, I've been doing this for 20 years, and what's really strange is that I got an email two weeks ago about warning me, not just me, all the coordinators, we have to be very careful what we say about the legislation, the legalization. I can have an opinion, but I can't speak against it. So right now, we are strictly addressing whether or not we should allow it in our town. Thanks.
Barry Bender, Stork Bay Avenue. It's very rare that Committeeman Dykoff and I agree on too many things. But anyway, I want to relate, I want to relate a personal story, okay? And it's got nothing to do with distribution, but it has to do with medicinal marijuana. I had an older sister who lived in Florida, okay? As of the 12th of this month, it'll be two years that she's gone. She got pancreatic cancer, and my older sister, Pete, to you, you're a progressive compared to my older sister, okay? She was diagnosed, it was two years ago, probably about six months before April, where she was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. She went into treatment immediately, heavy duty, come on, the intravenous, what's the intravenous that they give you for cancer? Come on.
Chemotherapy.
Chemo, heavy duty, heavy, heavy, heavy duty chemotherapy. She was in, felt horrible, horrible, I mean, terrible. Someone recommended to her using medicinal marijuana, okay? Now, my sister, extremely, extremely conservative. She started taking the medicinal marijuana, and it made things easier for her, okay? Definitely made things easier for her. I visited her the December, she died in April, I visited her in December, and she, we would joke that, oh, you know, I'm taking my medicinal marijuana, I'm going to get high. It never made her that way. But anyway, there was a point later on, and pancreatic cancer is one of the tougher ones, okay? There was a point later on where she was actually clear of the cancer, and she, she felt in her heart that maybe the medicinal marijuana helped with that also. But then what happened is she started to bleed from her brain, and they couldn't give her the chemo anymore, and she was, six weeks later, she was gone. But to the day that she went, she swore that the medicinal marijuana, and I, all I heard was negative things being said, but the medicinal marijuana made things much easier for her and helped her right up to the end of her life. And I just wanted to get that point out there for everyone, that there are some positives, okay, when it comes to this stuff. And I just, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks very much, and we agreed on that. Thank you.
Did you ask you to come?
No, I didn't.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Ron Martin, yeah, I'm back. Ron Martin, Ford, Ford Dunberg, I forgot to leave you. I thought of these issues, so that you would have that, and if they're ready to start the pro forma, we have some troops in the back, CDA's, certified accountants, financial analysts, and we're going to help them sort out this problem. All right, thank you.
Your time, thank you.